I'd like to call the January 3, 2023, City Council Meeting to order at 7:00 PM. Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. The United States of America. To the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Hey, Oath of Office administered by Judge Todd. You need to do. We're going to start with Andrew LaFrenz. Put your hand up. It's too late. All right, so excuse me. I'm going to ask you to repeat after me, so please raise your right hand.
I, Andrew LaFrenz.
I, Andrew LaFrenz.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
That I will, to the best of my ability.
That I will, to the best of my ability.
Faithfully discharge the duties of Counselor to which I have been elected.
Say that again. That was a long one.
Faithfully discharge the duties of Counselor to which I have been elected.
Faithfully discharge the duties of Counselor to which I have been.
Elected.
Elected.
By the citizens of Scapoose.
By the citizens of Scapoose.
I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
Laws of the State of Oregon.
The laws of the State of Oregon.
And the Charter and Municipal Code.
And the Charter and Municipal Code.
Of the City of Scapoose.
The City of Scapoose.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
And next. Give me time to remember that one.
And congratulations to you. Please raise your right hand. I, Kim Holmes.
I, Kim Holmes.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
That I will, to the best of my ability.
That I will, to the best of my ability.
Faithfully discharge the duties.
Faithfully just discharge the duties.
Counselor to which I have been elected.
Of Counselor to which I have been elected.
By the citizens of Scapoose.
By the citizens of Scapoose.
I will support the Constitution.
I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
The laws of the State of Oregon.
The laws of the State of Oregon.
And the Charter and Municipal Code.
And the Charter and the Municipal Code.
Of the City of Scapoose, so help me God.
Of the City of Scapoose, so help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I, Joe Backus.
I, Joe Backus.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
That I will, to the best of my ability.
That I will, to the best of my ability.
Faithfully discharge the duties of Mayor.
Faithfully discharge the duties of Mayor.
To which I have been elected.
To which I have been elected.
By the citizens of Scapoose.
By the citizens of Scapoose.
I will support the Constitution.
I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
Laws of the State of Oregon.
Laws of the State of Oregon.
And the Charter and Municipal Code.
And the Charter and the Municipal Code.
Of the City of Scapoose.
Of the City of Scapoose.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Appreciate it.
Okay. You know. A roll call. Like we're all present. Jeanette Santiago is excused. In person. Hey, I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
You should approve as presented.
Motion made by Council President Grayson. Seconds?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Miller. Any question? Okay, all those in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. Done. All right, next, we need to elect a Council President. So I'm looking for nominations for a Council President.
I nominate current Council President Grayson.
Okay. I have a nomination and a second. Any other nominations? Okay, see none, with only one nomination. Motion by Tyler to accept. Do we need a vote on that? The motion by Tyler. Council President Grayson, and a second by Counselor McHugh. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 Post. Motion carries. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Appreciate this. Okay, we have public comment. These are items that are not on the agenda. We're limited to five minutes. If you want to speak, please sign in with Ms. Reeves. The written testimony as well. You have a couple here. More? Okay. Let's go down the list. Okay, we have, it looks like a joint. Joel Haugen and Marissa Jacobs, except for name and city of record. And. We'll start your five minutes when you need it.
Again. Good evening, Mayor and Counsel, and welcome to 2023. I have handed you a letter from my attorney, Christopher P. Kobach, Hathaway Larson LLP. Mr. Kobach has outlined numerous procedural errors and substantively flawed decision-making to Buxton Farms subdivision, the local land use proceeding. They're listed in detail. Marissa will summarize for you now because I've got a cold.
There were two major procedural errors. One, Counsel violated Mr. Haugen's right to provide written evidence and testimony of the December 5, 2022 hearing, and during a required open record period. Scapoose Municipal Code, Section 17.162.090, lists the approval authority responsibilities. And Section C discusses the planning commission's process and states that the planning commission self-conduct a public hearing in the manner prescribed by Chapter 162. Thus, every quasi-judicial hearing must comply with all of Chapter 162. This did not occur with this application. Two, Counsel improperly reopened the record to allow the developer to modify the application without allowing other participants to provide evidence and testimony on the new proposal. Staff allowed the applicant to modify the application during the December 12, 2022 council meeting after the record was improperly closed. Staff did not permit any participant to testify or present evidence on the modification. To reopen the record for the applicant, the city is required to reopen the record to all other participants. Next, the decision is substantively flawed. One, Counsel failed to make findings that address the issues opponents raised and evidence they submitted. Luba has consistently held that when a party raises an issue over whether an application complies with relevant criteria, the decision-maker must address those issues and findings. The planning commission never addressed any of the substantive issues raised by opponents that demonstrated lack of compliance with criteria. They immediately adopted staff-proposed findings that were completed before opponents raised those issues. Similarly, after opponents testified in detail to Counsel identifying criteria that was not satisfied, Counsel failed to adopt any findings of its own. Counsel simply adopted the same staff findings that never mentioned the opponent's testimony and evidence. There are eight findings of error to the criteria that I will briefly summarize. A, lot size requirements. The applicant was not able to meet the lot size requirements in R1 zone, thus requesting an exception to those standards. Because the application relied on requesting an exception or a waiver to the standards, the law allows you to apply discretion in deciding whether to approve the request. The question to ask is whether the proposal and the decision results in lots that are compatible to the surrounding area and consistent with the objectives for requiring larger lots in an area prone to flooding. There are no findings that address this critical issue. The staff report superficially mentions lot sizes but never addresses the opponent's issue. The planning commission and Counsel adopted the same staff findings that never mentioned the opponent's testimony and evidence. B, the decision allows private development in the floodplain inconsistent with Scapoose Code. The applicant's plan is to use the permitted development in Phase 1 to generate fill that will be used to raise the floodplain level in areas subject to the more restrictive 20,000 lot size requirement. Because the private ponds are not permitted development in the floodplain, the applicant cannot demonstrate that the permitted development will allow it to raise the floodplain enough to obtain the formal and final FEMA revision. C, Counsel did not make any findings on critical flaws in the stormwater treatment proposal. Another issue A is raised at council hearing is whether the private facilities can be properly maintained. As the applicant proposed, the detention ponds, if they are not maintained and fail to function, the default is that the untreated runoff is released directly into the creek. HOAs are administratively dissolved on a regular basis, thus the city will need to take action against an unincorporated group of owners most likely leaving the burden on the city as a whole. D, there are no findings addressing issues raised over the proposed phasing plan. The decision is relying on the development of private stormwater ponds in Phase 1 to elevate the floodplain. However, the applicant's plan to raise the floodplain is not allowed in Scapoose Code and therefore cannot be approved. But it was. So what happens when Phase 2 is not approved by FEMA because the developer wasn't able to raise the floodplain? What's Plan B? This was raised by opponents and not addressed. The three remaining decision flaws. C, E, Counsel failed to even consider the more conservative analysis of flood risk factors presented by opponents. And F, the application fails to satisfy block length and connectivity standards. And G, the Counsel failed to make findings addressing the argument that Eagleston Lang will function as a cul-de-sac but fails to satisfy the standards for a cul-de-sac. All three impact the health and safety of the existing and new inhabitants for this development, and the decision completely ignores Fire Code Table D103.4. Mr. Kobach is an expert land use attorney. The letter outlines in detail the numerous procedural errors and flawed decision-making in this process. Therefore, Counsel should withdraw the decision for reconsideration. Counsel does not need to live with an approved development and its inevitable negative impacts on the city. Counsel has the absolute and unrestricted right to withdraw the decision to reconsider it, should it be approved. Refer to case Oregon Pipeline Company LLC versus Clatsop County of 202012.
Five minutes.
In that case, the court may please have one minute, Mayor, to just finish. I'm about 10 sentences away.
You'll have to stop. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Lead on. We have Steve Collard. State your name and city of residence. Again, we'll start your clock.
Good evening. Steve Collard, Elbow West IV Drive, Scapoose, Oregon. Welcome, new Counselors. My comments are going to be brief. It's a continuation of Mr. Haugen's statement, which I happen to agree with. It's not much left to it, so. Can you hear me all right? Counsel does not have to live with the approved development and its inevitable negative impacts on the city. Counsel has the absolute and unrestricted right to withdraw the decision to reconsider whether it should be approved. Refer to case Oregon Pipeline Company LLC v. Clatsop County of 2012. In that case, the court confirmed that at any time before this record is due to be delivered to Luba, the governing body of the local jurisdiction may withdraw a final land use decision for reconsideration. In that case, the new Counsel withdrew the decision for the purpose of reconsidering and denying the application. Your city attorney can advise you that you do not have the right to withdraw the December 19, 2022 decision, nor can he advise that such a decision exposes the city to a man of misaction for violating the 120-day period in ORS 227.178. This ends Mr. Kobach's summary. The letter provides details for all points in his letter. I urge you to do the right thing. Move to vote to withdraw the decision to reconsider tonight and instruct staff to pause all activities on this development. Restore faith in our citizens and our process. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next, Pat Anderson. Amen, city of residence.
Evening.
Evening.
Can you hear me? Pat Anderson. I live in Scapoose, Oregon. So back in the December 12 city council meeting, I brought up an issue that I found regarding a stormwater facility that was over in the Steinfeld subdivision. So for all the new council members and for the mayor, I'll briefly kind of recap what that letter was because I would like to address that, some follow-up on that. So first of all, the stormwater facility is taken over. It's severely overgrown with blackberries. Grass is three to four foot high. There's weeds and debris, both organic and trash, that are there in the retaining pond. The blackberries are so dense that you can't see through it. It's growing on retaining walls and on the fences. Anyway, so just out of curiosity, I went and looked on the City of Scapoose website, and I found a recorded document regarding the Steinfeld West subdivision recorded agreement that was dated back from 2007. So remember that date, 2007. Basically, to recap what that obligation is, there's a maintenance obligation that falls on that HOA. They're called the code declarence, and they'll maintain that facility. It stipulates three conditions. That the stormwater facility should be mowed regularly to be maintained a maximum grass height of six inches or less. Access to the stormwater facility access gate shall remain free of obstructions at all times, allowing access by the City of Scapoose Public Works Department for inspection, maintenance, and repair. And third, debris that accumulates along the fence within the stormwater facility shall be removed monthly. So that's the maintenance obligation. Under the second point, there's facility inspections. HOA shall inspect the facilities for maintenance and deficiencies in the above maintenance requirements, a minimum of twice each year. Except once between September or October. And the second would be April to May. Third, there's city inspections. The city has the right to enter the property at any time to inspect the facility and to make determinations, maintenance thereon is necessary, or if deficiencies exist or need to be corrected. In any such case, the code declarence will be notified by the city in writing of said noted deficiencies and directed to make corrections. So the point to that was, those three things have all failed. And so the three points that I made in my statements on the 1212 was that this recorded document sets the precedence of future HOA self-regulation. It seems that the recorded document does nothing to ensure that the HOA is acting responsibly, and there is zero governance in place to enforce it. Since the stormwater system has a potential to affect more than just the HOA, it was very disconcerting that the city would relinquish control and accountability to an unelected entity, the HOA. And then permitting the HOA to self-regulate and be responsible for infrastructure that potentially impacts a community outside the HOA's boundaries just didn't make sense. So I was asking the city council at that time, or the city, to take some sort of action on that. So I reached out to Ms. Raines in an email, and I asked just what's the follow-up on that? So she was very quick in her response, which I appreciated. And I'd like to just kind of address her response because I do still have some concerns. She indicated that the city engineer did conduct a site visit and did some research, and I'm just kind of recapping this. And then in her email, she also reiterated what was in the document that was recorded, which I had already gone over. So she states in her last paragraph that since we were first made aware of this issue, which I assume it was on 1212 when I brought it up, she quote states, quote, "We have discovered that the property was not transferred to the HOA in accordance to the land use decision, and will be reaching out to the property owner to have them take corrective action as soon as possible." That's the end of the email. So it's been 15 years that this stormwater facility went unmaintained. It was under the radar. It was very disappointing in the response that I got that even though they have reached out to the owners to take corrective action, I felt that the city also has, as co-owners of that facility, that they should also take some, have some sort of steps in place for risk mitigation or governance process put in place by the City of Scapoose that would not allow this to fall through the cracks again. The city seems to, again, have shifted the responsibility back to the HOA, who has failed.
Anderson, five minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Guys, that's the four that I have. Before we move on, I just have.
Yeah, I have a statement to make, a question. First of all, I did receive a copy of this report that you have before this meeting, and so I have had a chance to read it. I don't know if anybody else got a copy of it or not, but I do think there's enough substance in there that we need to deal with it in some manner. I'm not sure what that manner is, but I do think it has.
Counselor McHugh, are you, which, sorry, what are you referring?
Well, we've got two reports. There's this report from Attorney Kobach.
Thank you.
And I'm not an attorney. I don't know all this information here is, what merit there is to it, but there is enough there that I think we need to address it as a Counsel to, you know, see what we want to do with this information. So my suggestion is that after council members have read this report and maybe looked at Joel's appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals, that we, you know, contact Mayor or somebody to give them our suggestion on where we should go from here. We do it in the work, talk about it in the work session, talk about it as an agenda item. I don't know. But I do think we can't just receive this information and do nothing.
Mayor.
Yes.
In response to Counselor McHugh just stated, I think that it would be prudent for City Legal Council to review the documents that were given to us this evening. And then we basically need the city's legal counsel to do an analysis on that, see if they concur, and then they can advise us on their legal opinion, and we can go from there.
Is this something, how would the process work? Is this an executive session?
Well, we could do it in a variety of ways. I haven't seen the letter. I mean, I, if I believe there have been any substantial errors or omissions in the process because this has been raised a number of times, I would have said so. I haven't seen a Luba appeal, so I don't know if the Luba appeal has occurred or not.
Did he hand you either one of these?
No, I don't have any of those materials.
You know, it is a letter and an appeal, notice of intent to appeal.
Just to make a correction, it's not an appeal yet. It's a notice of intent.
Notice of intent to appeal.
Yeah, so what, the way that Luba works is that the petitioner has 21 days in order to file a notice of appeal, at which point the city is responsible for coming up with the record, which is every document that we've received in chronological order, beginning with the first document that we received. What I heard, and I don't have maybe the Kobach letters part of this, is that there is a process at Luba where you can do what's referred to as a voluntary remand, which is not, not something that I would recommend at this point. I mean, the record is what it is. We've had a lot of complications with the record because we had people trying to submit documents after the record was closed. We had people raising new arguments despite the fact that we had stated it was to raise it or waive it in front of the planning commission. And, you know, if, in the event, you know, it's not just the rights of the city, it's also the rights of the opponents who apparently are appealing, as well as the. As well, and usually I would have a stamped copy with the Luba number on it. So I don't, I guess I'm assuming this has been filed with Luba. But, you know, I think that. I, I'm, it's complicated as this process was, legally speaking, I'm comfortable with where we're at. And the Land Use Board of Appeals, you know, handles these. The applicant has their rights. The city has their rights. And the, and the. The opponents have their rights. And I would, I guess, my preference would not, to not further muddy the waters in that, you know, we've already had a. We have already had a situation where I don't think, and we haven't done a land use training yet. So I can't tell you all about quasi-judicial hearings and how you act as judges and all the very prescriptive rules that the State of Oregon imposes on all of us. But it's not you as a Counsel that gets to choose a lot of these. It's called state preemption, so the state gets to tell us what to do. But. You know, I, I think if I had been concerned with those errors or omissions or thought that staff hadn't addressed them, I would have said so at the time because I hate losing. So I, I think that, you know, that this process will play out as it plays out. And, and Luba will decide what they decide.
Hearing Counselor McHugh's concerns and Tyler's recommendation, I do agree that I think more needs to be done, at least looked into. I mean, what kind of a timeframe? We have some time, some. I would just like to know more about this. Our exposure, you know, our rights, what are our options?
And so our, our options are going to be whatever the parties agree to. So it is possible to stay a Luba appeal. It's not uncommon, but that would require the consent of both the applicant. It would require the consent of all parties. Whether, I mean, I am happy to read the Kobach letter. I will want to do that. Listening to it on the fly, it sounds like things that were already raised and things that were dealt with in the staff report. We've tried to be as transparent as possible about, about this process and what people could and could not consider, and when they could and could not do things.
President Grayson?
I think we're in a pretty unique situation that half the people sitting up here are new. And I think, what are you able to communicate to us as a group, let's say via email in terms of facts, in terms of we received this on this date, it couldn't be accepted, et cetera, et cetera? How much, or is that something that?
I mean, we can, we can.
You need to do in person.
Can do it. There's an executive session that, that deals with pending or threatened litigation, and we're certainly within that. I, throughout this process, my recommendation to staff has been that we be transparent as possible. It seems like there are a lot of people that, and again, there's a difference between a city council hearing something legislatively.
Sure.
Which means you can consider anything in the known universe and really, you don't have to make a decision based on the record, though we always would hope that you would, at least in part, versus quasi-judicial, as well as your ability to do things or not do things. And, you know, this is very unique in that this was decided by the last city council one we've had. We have a city counselor who has recused herself from the process, so it would be that 50% of the council has not been through. They have watched the videos, but you may have attended the meetings, but necessarily been through the process. So I guess what I would say is, I am comfortable with where we are. And there is always some legal risk.
I guess I would, I was part of the process before, so I'm up to speed on all those things that have been written in this letter and came before that and everything. I guess I would just like to offer some space up to those that are new because they are getting somewhat roped into something that happened before. And then we need to decide, are they capable of?
Well, this is a new city council, and, and you know, I advise the city council that I staff. I think that the record is already. I mean, there are people that simply didn't respect the rules of a quasi-judicial and use hearing as far as ex parte communication, frankly, as far as submitting documents. frankly, as far as submitting documents. I, based on what I've seen so far, my guess is that a lot of people had ex parte communication, both former councillors and new councillors, that would all need to be disclosed as part of this if we're doing a hearing. The record is already, already is robust. These arguments have already been made, they were dealt with by the former city council. And in some respects, in the event that there is an error or omission and it would be remanded by Luba, that would be an easier, cleaner process to start over than trying to voluntarily remand something. And that's my opinion at this time. I mean, you guys can do what you'd like. If we're going to do that, I think we'd, we would want, no, I would wanna, I would wanna have a conversation with Chris Kovak, and I'd also wanna have a conversation with Garrett.
Alvin Miller?
Just gonna offer a solution here to council. So we have this letter, it's dated December 29, 2022, from Mr. Algen's legal counsel, which is Christopher Kovak, as you said earlier. There's very clear, basically allegations in this letter. Would it be wise and comforting to this council, for legal coun, for our city legal council to go through and analyze these arguments and allegations and write us a legal opinion on whether or not these are likely to prevail in front of a Luba appeal or not? I think we need to stick to specifically what is alleged in this letter and determine whether or not this is likely or not likely, how it's gonna play out in a Luba appeal. Because what I don't want to have happen is this be kicked down the road and then find out that, I mean, I'm not ignorant to everybody making mistakes, and I'm open minded. So we have very specific allegations here. Should we review these and make sure that we didn't have any oversight? And this council feel confident that there was no oversight, because the last thing that I want to have happen is city staff waste our resources continuing down this road when perhaps there is something here. I'm not saying that there is, but I'm saying that this warrants, this may warrant, my opinion is, this may warrant a review on these specific allegations.
Yeah, I mean, I'd be happy to do that if that's.
I, I do agree, I mean, I, the new council, kind of coming in now, I, I don't want to see this come back, then we will be involved, we'll be part of it, without doing our due diligence and, and at least visiting this and seeing if there's some, something there to look at. By just quickly seeing this, I mean, we have a little bit of time to do that. I just don't know the process, the best way to do it, and I'd like to maybe get a feeling then from the rest of the council if they stay with, possibly going over each one of these, or what kind of a meeting, or are you by yourself?
Well, I didn't mean to interrupt, no. But I, I think our attorney's advice, if I understood correctly, is if we were to have an executive session to review this, I think that would be maybe the best way to go about it. That's my thought on it, anyway.
That's a, that's an executive decision to, to review and discuss and talk.
Right.
And any decision would have to come out of a regular.
Give them a chance to respond to these allegations, yeah.
Yeah, if I could, also just on the timing, so if an executive session were to take place and we decide that there was some omission or error in process, right, which is obviously important for all parties in a judicial, quasi judicial situation, what would be our next step then? Is there a way to, I guess, work with the parties relating to this Luba appeal, or has the train left the station once it's filed?
So Luba, Luba actually has a, it's seldom used, but a mediation or cram opportunity. So I, I don't know whether that's something that the parties would be interested in or not. I, you know, again, they have 21 days to appeal. Once we receive the notice of appeal, we prepare the record. I mean, I think staff has been aware that this is something where there was a threatened appeal throughout, so I think that they've been doing that groundwork on the front end. At that point, then, the people appealing it have the opportunity to review the record, and they have a opportunity to say that there's, and, and so does the applicant, to say that something should be in the record or shouldn't be in the record. We can all either agree that it should or shouldn't be on the record, in the record. If we don't, then Luba gets to decide, at which point pleadings are prepared, and then oral argument occurs, and it's all designed to happen within less than a six month period, depending.
So if I get this right, if it does go to Luba within the next six months, they'll, they'll redo the whole case in front of Luba?
No, so, so what, what, how Luba works is that, is that the petitioner and the opponents, the petitioner and the respondents file pleadings, and then we have oral argument, which would be similar to, like, the Court of Appeals. It's closest to Court of Appeals rather than like a circuit court case. The city and whichever side the city decides with have 15 minutes of time to split, and then the other side has 15 minutes of time. And the Luba board, which is three members, if none of them refuse themselves, then hear it and issue an opinion, and, and that can go with, they side with, you know, the city on errors or omissions, or the other thing would be a remand if there is, if there is something that was identified. And, and I guess there, there's the possibility that the people challenging the program would, could prevail as well. Remand is something that happens pretty frequently from Luba. I've certainly been involved in cases where they remanded something. I've also been in, had Luba cases where, you know, seven errors or omissions, and one case I'm thinking of were alleged and we won on all seven. So it's hard to, it's hard to know exactly, you know, there's no certainty in the law. But I think that, you know, if, if at any point in the process, I had become uncomfortable with anything that was within our control, because a lot of things that happened were outside of our control and despite my best warnings, there was nothing I could do about it. But if it was anything that was within our control, I certainly would have flagged it. I think if the applicant had been concerned about any of these things, they would have agreed to extend that 120 day clock, which we were really coming up against, and, and they did, they weren't. So that, that was kind of my analysis to the time, and I haven't seen anything that would change my analysis, but I am happy to review the letter and happy to schedule an executive session so that we can have, to the extent that we need to have a more frank conversation, I'm happy to do that. Again, I think, given everything with this application, I hope it's to be as transparent as possible, just as to what we can do and what we can't do. And then, you know, as long as you guys are aware of the legal risk associated with different courses of action, whatever you decide, decision, certainly something I respect.
That's fair. So this letter, I mean, basically tells us what they're going to appeal. So I just, I, I still go back to, I think it's important to go through, step through each one of these and see if there's, if city legal council concurs with what they're alleging or not. I just, I don't want to waste anybody's time going down a path that if we read something here and say, oh yeah, this is pretty black and white, I mean, why, why would we continue down a path that we, and waste people's time? So I just, I guess, my comfort level is, is we know specifically what the allegations are, they've written them out here very clearly for us, is that our legal counsel reviews that and determines what are, if we comply with everything, if there's no issues here, or if there is, and then council be briefed on that so we know what exactly we're looking at.
During that time, I, I definitely would like Lori and Chris to be a part of that process in, in educating and filling in the council. We, do you feel most comfortable responding to these allegations in a written form?
Or? I mean, I, if we, if we want to get into this, I would like to schedule an executive session before the next city council meeting. I'll confer with Lori and Chris, and we can have the conversation. Again, we have, there may or may not be an appeal, we're discussing a decision that may or may not be appealed right now.
By, if, if we were to schedule an executive decision, I mean, I'm sure this would have a stamp on it, have had appeal, time we would meet, I would assume.
Yeah, I mean, Luba gives it, gives us a Luba number that would go next to the O period and.
So, I mean, it, it has dates on it as of today, so I'm assuming it was filed today.
Peter?
Did I ask if it's been filed?
His hand is raised.
Algen? Lee?
Yes, Mr. Kovak mailed a certified mail to, to Luba today. And, you know, if, if you're willing, I, I have a simpler solution here.
Okay, well, we're good. Thank you. That's our Holmes.
I was just gonna say, I, I mean, since this sounds like it's the first time most of it myself, I, I personally would.
I just feel doing our due diligence, if we have a little bit of time, especially with some new, I would really like to make sure that we, very confident doing, especially if we've given this and we fail to act on it, and some of these things are legitimate and we, we had the opportunity. I, I think at least discussing it, potentially within a week before our next meeting, an executive session, if you could, like you said in writing, come back answering each one on your, your feeling how we've covered ourselves, that what I'm sensing.
I, I would say that that's an important step. I guess, one question I have, though, again, relates back to the timing of that. So if it's been filed and we go through that exercise of going through kind of what's been claimed here in the appeal, our recourse, change course is what?
We, we can voluntarily remand at a point prior to the record being submitted.
Which would be?
Which? Like a month.
Okay. And I just, I, I raised that question because, Susan, I thank you for preparing some of the relevant code for, that will need to function as a council, and I've reviewed it a lot over this break, and there is the option in our meeting materials in chapter, sorry, in the code 2.04, the option for reconsideration, which effectively would buy us the time that we're seeking, right, if we're going into executive session. There's the option for, when a matter has been adopted or defeated, any councillor voting on a prevailing side may move to reconsider, for reconsideration of the matter, but I believe it has to be done at the meeting after which the vote, the meeting after the vote was taken and approved. So conceivably, we could have a motion to reconsider, have our executive session, review all of the facts, and then.
We would be reopening the public hearing process at that point, and we're beyond the 120 day period. So the, the 120, 120 day period expired at the end of December. So at that point, if the last city council had not made a decision, Land use application as submitted would have been approved automatically by law.
Okay, and since we're outside of that 120 day period, there is no option to exercise the reconsideration in the code?
So, and, and do you know what? I, I really, we, once this appeal has happened, we, there is a statute as well as a Luba rule that will allow us to do a remand. So at that point, we could open things back up. I need to do a little bit of research, I've only used that once, and would want to confer with council. That is an option that might be available to us, but moving to reconsider at this meeting is not. I mean, we do not have the applicant here, nobody received notice that this was going to occur tonight, I certainly wasn't able to prepare for it.
No.
Staff wasn't able to prepare for it. I had, I would have expected a courtesy copy of the Luba appeal emailed to me, I didn't receive it, and, you know, all, all, the more we have this conversation of public hearing, or excuse me, in a public meeting, outside of the hearing process, the more substantial the legal risk is of having issues.
But did you say, reading what you had said, can you reconsider then at a later date than tonight?
Can I make a clarification? So the section of municipal code that Counselor Holmes just read is not specific to a quasi judicial land use hearing, has nothing to do with it, so it's totally unrelated. So it would be any other council decision except for any kind of a land use hearing, just because by nature it's so unique and set out in state statute as far as how.
As far as the saying, has to be done the next meeting, doesn't relate to this.
No.
And just to clarify, when you're saying remand, and we've heard reconsideration, those are two different things, correct?
Right, so a remand would, let's say one of the errors or omissions that they had identified Luba agreed with, Luba would remand the case to the city council for further consideration, to make findings related to that error or omission, that that would be included in the record, or so.
It would just be centered on that particular.
At one specific point.
Mr. Mayor? So will you email us on an available date and time for an executive session?
I, yeah, I mean, I can, I can schedule.
What is the period that we have between now and, I mean, what are, what are the rules? How long do we have? I mean, that assumes that we need, we do a review and then we want to change something, of course, but.
So you would have, you would have until the record is submitted and approved by Luba. So I can't give you an exact date, because if any party believed there was something that either was in the record and shouldn't be, or wasn't in the record.
And should be.
And should be, then we don't have the, you know, we don't have a confirmed record, and that could go on for a while. So I wish I could say like 21 days or what have you, but I can't.
You can find that out based on the date of a Luba appeal, they will not even look at it for a certain amount of dates, that we can do something during that timeframe.
You can, we could, we could ask Luba to voluntarily remand the decision for further consideration by council.
Could I? Right, we know that that's an option, but I think that what Mayor Backus is getting at is, what's our timeframe to look at it before we would perhaps say that we wanted to do that? In other words, you mentioned 30 days a second ago?
Well, I, I mean, again, we're, are we talking about me answering questions as the executive session? Because we have a confirmed decision and it's been appealed. So we're, we're no longer in this venue, we're in a new venue, which is a Luba.
Asking how much time we have to make a decision before Luba starts working on it.
Luba won't do anything until they have a confirmed record. So they, other than.
When's the soonest that they could have that, once we, like, we have to turn the papers in, and, and how long?
I, I mean, you're asking me for administrative rules off of my memory, and I had no idea that it was coming in front of us tonight. So it's, it's not, it's, it's no more than 45 days. I mean, we, you know, we've got a record that's probably a thousand pages at this point, but we've been identifying them as they came in, so it shouldn't take that long to put the record in. And then what the people do with the record, I don't know, because we had all this ex parte contact and other stuff.
That's what I'm saying, I don't want to have a meeting and know that it was too late. So if we meet within a week, you don't expect it to be final at that point.
No, I mean, I have nowhere close to that.
They have to prepare.
And, and because we have to, what's called Bates label, every page, and because we have to do all these technical things in order to comply with Luba's rules, including the gauge of the paper that we use, and the color of the cover paper that we use, and how it can be bound. I mean, there are all of these. I mean, there are all of these. It's not a free-for-all, I mean, there, there are these incredibly prescriptive rules about exactly how to present the record, and then how much time people have to review the record, and then how we correct the record, and then it gets to the pleadings. And it's not going to happen next week.
Think, I've had it. To, I would like to see that, I mean, our name that will be put on this, and if we have a little bit of time, go through and make sure we feel comfortable and confident in our decisions, especially with some new ones up here. I would like to see that. So you will get with Lori on time, schedule, and announce what night might work? Kind of motion needed to be made?
No, we'll just schedule it. I'm hearing council say you want an executive session, we know what's it about, and we can notice it, and.
I don't think in a week we'll have enough time to notice it and for you to prepare a response. Could we do it on the 16th then, after, or the 17th after the regular meeting?
Yeah.
What was the work session for the 17th? Have that.
Review the goals if we didn't finish, which at this.
You do it before the meeting? Not going to have a work session, or?
No, what she's saying is.
What I'm saying is.
So long this evening?
Right, that I don't think you're going to finish this evening before nine o'clock because this took so long. So you are going to need the time at the next meeting to finish this.
Weeks out, I think that's still enough time.
I, is it possible to join an executive session remotely?
The time opens up before then, but not next week, then let us know, but otherwise we'll look for 17. You know what? Consent agenda, looking for a motion, we've got a consent agenda, December 5, 2022, council work session minutes. December 5, 2022, city council meeting minutes. December 12, 2022, council work session minutes. December 12, 2022, city council meeting minutes. December 19, 2022, city council meeting minutes. Looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I so move.
Moved by Counselor McHugh, second motion.
Second.
Second by Council President Grayson, any discussion? All those in favor, stay by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. And carries. Okay, back to new business, or up to new business, back to reviewing goals. Left off with 3.0.
Yes, so Mayor and Council, we're on goal three, which is create a safe city with a visible public safety presence. 3.1 is an operational needs analysis and to maintain sufficient staffing.
Yes.
Chief, I'm wondering if you could just run us through some numbers on who we have and who we need and who's coming?
So Lieutenant's finally here. So our lieutenant just started a couple of weeks ago. We have Officer Alec Burglin, he's in the academy currently. Frank Bosso is our second recruit officer, he'll be starting at the end of January. And then we have our three veteran officers that are maintaining the road. We hired an evidence tech who's been doing a wonderful job, and we will be conducting interviews for entry level at the end of this month. So hopefully that should get us close to par of full staffing, minus one position that's on hold.
Want to make sure I didn't see it later, was there something about a, the needs analysis, analyze, be doing a need analysis?
So we do have the Oregon Association of Chiefs coming in later this month, actually, to do an assessment of the department. They will look at organizational and management style, and essentially policies and operating that are operating within the department, and it's a pretty thorough report, they'll come back and let us know what they think of that. And beyond that report, if there's additional information that you all want to see out of that, we can always look at doing more. But I feel like this is a really good opportunity because it's a really great association and program, and it doesn't cost the city very much to have this done. We do have really well-respected chiefs from other cities that come in and do this assessment for us.
Do they kind of look at other cities of our size, or, you know, bigger, smaller, or geographical region, all that, and kind of kind of give us an idea of what they think we need?
They will look at staffing specifically. I don't know if they're necessarily going to compare us to other cities, I've seen some finished reports, I don't recall that. I know that they may give us, or might generally discuss with us the fact that I believe it's about one to 1.5 officers per thousand is kind of the general rule of thumb. So when we're fully staffed, we are right around that number. So the actual size of the department, what that's budgeted for is appropriate for the size of the city. That doesn't mean that, you know, in an ideal world, we wouldn't necessarily have more than that, but generally speaking, we are budgeted for that amount. Point two, increase transparency of crime data.
One question I have, do you have a tracker to see how many people are looking at that? I mean, can we get an idea of how many people visit that website?
So we, we do have analytics on the website, we can see how many people travel every page. I haven't looked yet at that page, but I can certainly do that.
I mean, if it's a big deal, it'd be nice if we have it in there to make sure people know about it and can look it up and.
Mr. Mayor. Chief, I have a question for you. And it's a whole different ballgame, so I'm just looking to get your input, just so the public can kind of know where we stand with this. The Fire District functions in a much more not going to use that word because it makes it look like we're not open forum in terms of there's an incident happening, they have a PR person or somebody on staff that links up right away to the Facebook page, a fire's occurring at this household, or there's an accident. It seems to be very like in the moment. People ask me what's going on, I literally go to Fire District website and something's popping up. Can you explain why maybe the police department's Facebook page doesn't function that way, or that we aren't putting things on social media about incidences that are occurring?
So we could, in some cases after the event, but we hardly want the citizens knowing what's going on currently, as all incidents are active, and we never know what we're going to get ourselves into. So we would be posing more of a safety risk by putting that information out to everyone, you know, crowds would form, people would, you know, get nosy, and it's, it's not safe for our officers to have to deal with crowds while they're dealing with an active situation. Because every call is different, we have to treat it as such. So we try to get as much out there after the fact, which is safer for everyone.
Perfect, thank you for explaining that.
On that, I get, occasionally I'm in a new neighborhood, we'll get a Facebook once in a while. This person's been walking through the neighborhood at four in the morning and is checking doors. If they send that to you, you then reach out and let people know that this has happened? Because you don't know if it's legit or not, it's, just put it out there, it may be completely fine. Someone asks, can you put that out on your Facebook?
To, what's the reason, though? What's the person doing? You know, if someone in the neighborhood's concerned, it's probably better calling dispatch and having an officer dispatched out to check out. But, I mean, that's kind of maybe invading on people that aren't doing anything wrong.
If you find at a later time that there was something done, and that would help and benefit, then you.
Then, of course, we would put it out for investigative purposes, maybe identify a suspect.
I ask a question. Isaac, back to you about the meeting, those kind of monthly.
Yeah, it should be regular.
Sorry, does that take a lot of practice? Just wonder if you kind of bridge the gap.
So the way that data is generated, in my understanding, is it is monthly tabulated. So we get, we actually get a report internally every month of call logs for what happened. That's when we move that data, and we're just moving that data from our call logs into so it's, there's no sooner timeline, we can really do that, we would have to go back and start crunching things by hand. Whereas what we get pulling, is pulled out of a system that automatically generates that.
I can add to that, I just received a report today from CCOM. So they generate it monthly for us.
Not more people?
No. It's a little more robust monthly anyway. You know, if we started doing it weekly and biweekly, it kind of gets watered down. So I should just put it out once a month.
So any statistics, they, they do their report, then you pull from their report and submit it on the website. Anything on theirs automatically goes into a report?
No, so what they'll do is they'll send us statistics for the month. So they'll break it down by crimes, and then Timmy Sewell will go in there and get the reports that you guys will start getting monthly, like the media reports, she'll pull the reports out, and that's where we'll get that data.
These kind of systems don't usually talk well. Even if they did, our website, because of the way our hosting works, doesn't do a lot of the kind of higher-scale communications that you're referencing, like automatic connecting to your Facebook with a stream on the top. That's just not something that we have the capabilities at this point. Even if we did, it's highly limited to how these systems talk.
All right, 3.3 coordinate with Columbia County 911.
Are any updated on that?
Well, I just have a comment. See, there's a meeting on the 11th, is that something that is open to the public, you know?
Yes, it is.
And it's, so it would be okay to attend, and they'll be deciding between the two programs that were presented to them, I guess, early December.
That's a possibility, it's not written in stone yet.
It's what?
Possibility, but it's not written in stone, it all depends on how the meeting goes.
Okay, okay, okay. So it seems to me that might be a good meeting for the listeners to attend if we're able to.
Yes.
3.4, maintain emergency response preparedness and updates to emergency operations plan to address all emergencies, including a cascade or earthquake event.
Um, just for reference, please remind me of the new director, Chris Carey. I've spoken with him on the phone about some other things. I'm very excited at this new turning point. This is something that I've been a little frustrated with, and I'm excited that, that, that there's leadership there, we're established here, we're ready to go, as this report says with the Fire District as well. So I'm really hopeful that an action plan will be put into place. So thank you, Dave and Chief, for being a part of that.
Yeah, I just wanted to bring a program to your guys' attention, if you weren't aware. So Portland has a very active, they call Net Team, which otherwise across the country it's referred to as CERT. I believe there is a county CERT program that's run out of St. Helens. And I really haven't seen, I think they did maybe have a tent at one of the events, maybe the 100-year event, but otherwise I haven't seen a whole lot of community activity from that group within Skapu. So I don't know if there's a way to kind of strengthen that. Are you aware of the CERT program?
I am aware, I'm just not quite sure how it works. I've kind of been concentrating more on our staffing, but that's something I could definitely reach out to the Sheriff's Office and Chief Greenway over at St. Helens.
Yeah, and it might tie into, I saw that you had a goal listed for kind of like a public academy, or another way to kind of engage the, you know, the citizens, which I understand has, had to kind of take the back burner to the priority of staffing and all of that. But wondering if maybe those two priorities could be merged, because it is a way to kind of engage the public, those who are interested in helping to prepare for and participate, particularly in earthquake preparedness and that, and assisting.
Yeah, I think we definitely have the equipment for it.
Yeah, that's great.
Mayor, may I, really quick, I just want to point something out, it's not correctly on point, but I just want to point out that 3.3 coordinate with 911 on the new system, and 3.4 in respects to the emergency operations and just what that would entail, really have a lot of overlap to them. Because as it stands right now, our emergency communication system is very, to put it best, questionable on whether or not it would withstand. I mean, it goes down during our typical weather events as is, so that should give you an idea of its ability to withstand a, say, cascade event. So I just want to point out that, you know, a lot of these, actually, a lot of these things have a lot of overlap. Thank you.
All right, 3.5, engage the school district to enhance the SRO program.
One question I have on that. If they were to build a new mid-school that was down on the same campus, having them right by each other, would that help at all? Having the schools side by side, not across the highway? This is something that we are wanting to work towards and get back to. Your recommendation, I mean.
So I'm pretty comfortable with the way the schools are situated. I mean, we did quite a few walkthroughs during the summertime. Prior to our new officers going to the academy, we had them walk in the schools daily, they were attending all the community events. While we may not be able to get to a traditional SRO program within the next year or so, once our two new officers come back and we kind of figure out what our schedule is going to be like, that'll be part of the regular duties. You know, I see myself getting out there, walking with, you know, with the lieutenant, making introductions. But we did try to attend quite a few events, we attended football games. A couple of officers went there and had lunch with some of the students. So, you know, we're trying our best as far as staffing and scheduling work.
Mr. Mayor. I would also note that this is a joint contract with the school district, and that that requires funds from both sides. And at the time, those funds were not available from the other side. So even if there is staffing on our end, the budget needs to come from both parties.
Right, if we do it currently, it would be within our regular duties.
Kind of like our budget, but.
It would be, you know, part-time, in between calls, as we could fit it in.
But the previous position specific as an SRO was a contract between us and them, and the money came from both of us, correct?
Fifty-fifty?
Like a 50-50. It was a two-year contract.
I have one final question on this, just very quick. So in terms of, you know, trying to engage with the students of the district and that, do you guys offer ride-alongs to high schoolers? Or is that something that's?
Usually for people that are.
People who are not.
Eighteen, 21, yeah, and not high school students.
Okay, oh, so not high school students?
No.
Okay.
Illegal adult.
Yeah, legal adult.
Okay, all right.
All right, 3.6, community engagement.
What, you had already gone over and saw that throughout the year?
I think it kind of fills in with some of the other goals that we were talking about earlier. We're part of just about every event that occurs.
3.7 is the Citizens Academy.
Done with that, one that I had, Kim had mentioned about highway safety. It's a lot to do with ODOT and the state. You kind of mentioned that there is some more workings with cities as we move into this, that maybe cities have a little more authority and ability to do stuff.
Yep.
And if that is the case, is that something we would want to look at as information comes?
As far as what?
I don't think this information is known to everybody in the room.
Yeah, no, and this was, so I saw a news article about all of the new laws that will be coming into effect this year. And one of them is that I think cities are being given a little bit more influence in what can signage-wise, perhaps even changing speed limits and that in areas. And I did not see any goals in here, so I'd asked Joe, did you see any goals around safety on Highway 30?
Highway goals, and then we go, of course, it's ODOT, there's nothing we can really do. But maybe if this is the case, and as it comes out, we look at it, that if there is more opportunities, signage would be big, speed limits.
So I, part of the Columbia County Traffic Safety Commission, so actually tomorrow morning, we meet 7:00 AM, and we bring all of our, we have our traffic safety committee here, so any concerns we have, I bring to that meeting. And they've been receptive. So I know they didn't, one sign wasn't exactly what everyone wanted, but.
Todd, did you have something?
We actually communicate with ODOT very frequently, I mean, we're on a first-name basis, speed dial, there's no lack of communication.
There's no lack of communication there. I guess what we would need to know is what particularly you would be requesting over and above what's there. We know of the speed zone on the north end of town. We're working to address that. We know of Dyke Road access, we're working to address that. But in between, is there something specific that's a concern? Because if there is, that always comes to our monthly city traffic safety meeting. And then we work through that to determine if there is truly a need. And then we move it to the appropriate agency, whether county, state, whoever that might be. We would just need to know what those concerns are because we do visit this very, very frequently, so.
We do have a rep from ODOT that's actually been joining even those meetings with us. He's been zooming or joining by team. So there is a lot of communication between us and ODOT.
I just don't see anything in a goal.
There's never really been a council goal because.
Yeah, it's just been something that we've always addressed on, with the traffic safety committee. So any concerns, go to that committee. And then, you know, from there, then we contact the, you know, appropriate parties. If it happens to be, you know, ODOT, we do that.
Yeah, so I guess it would be helpful to understand maybe what they're working on with the traffic safety committee in particular is working on. I mean, one of the things that I heard a lot kind of in the election cycle from residents is concern over Highway 30 and their, the feeling that there's an uptick in accidents occurring. I don't know, maybe some data would be helpful to see if that's an actuality? Or is it just a, you know, a symptom of things getting posted on Facebook and so it's more visible to people? Or what, but maybe just kind of understanding what the reality is of.
Getting the statistics will be quite easy.
Yeah, ODOT actually on their website has all that statistics available to the public at any given moment, where it'll tell you the entire Highway 30 corridor, where they're seeing the accidents, where they're not, what that looks like. They're huge on statistics, so that data is readily available.
That's what drives what we can and cannot do.
Exactly.
Correct.
ODOT responds to where there's issues. If there's no issues.
It really won't do anything.
They're working wherever the highest priority.
It is, no, I mean, it's all based on crash data and things like that. You know, even when you're identifying a problem, let's say there's an area where you think, or you see a lot of near accidents, that doesn't mean they're going to do anything about it until there are some, fortunately, some bad accidents. They're all driven by data and they're very, you know, I think they don't, I don't think they have the budget to be proactive. So they're reactive. They wait until things really become a problem and that's when they step in. So they do do a good job of tracking the data, but they won't act in a proactive manner, generally speaking, because they don't have the money.
When they do stats of accidents or speeding in our city, do they also put us with St. Helens? Since it's such a similar city, very close in proximity, same cars for the most part? Or is it our little through two, three mile stretch as the stats?
They look at it globally. They look at it from, let's just say, Portland to Astoria. They'll run that whole stretch. They'll show you how many accidents in each intersection, go on and so forth. We probably see more traffic, obviously, than St. Helens because people are fading off as they get to their destinations. But typically, don't have, as they've said, we don't have a lot of incidents compared to other regions of the corridor.
I think it's.
At our last traffic safety committee, we had representative from ODOT there and he provided some really good information. One of the things he said that they're changing their outlook on things a little bit. He says, we're kind of looking for low hanging fruit, is what he says. Things that they can, they can deal with and correct and without going through all the red tape that would have to do otherwise. So, and this was in reference to an intersection that's outside the city, but it affects the city and that's on the Johnson Landing. And so there was concerns about that, which the county traffic safety committee has also addressed. But anyway, he called that a low hanging fruit and he'd be looking into it for us, so it's good news.
Bennett Road is a great example. I mean, how many years of those of you who have lived in this area have known of fatalities at Bennett Road? And it's just now being.
Just understanding where the data comes from too is relevant to mention too. It comes from the traffic crash reporting data that either is completed by the, sometimes the police do it and sometimes it's up to the person or the people involved in the crash to submit those crash reports to DMV. If those aren't submitted, then that, of course, there's no source for that information.
And at our last traffic safety meeting, we actually talked about implementing where Scapoo's PD would report it to our new GIS. We've been working to update all of our GIS data and eventually maybe creating a layer where those officers or however that goes will be reported. And then we'll have within our own boundary what that data is specifically, but it's not in place yet.
So I guess just hearing that there is lots of activity happening and understanding that it is a priority to the citizens here, I'm wondering if it's possible to kind of gather some of the necessary information? Like maybe some, if you guys can provide some of the meeting minutes from the past traffic safety group to review and maybe some stats historically, like maybe the past few years on crashes and that, to see if a goal around traffic safety is necessary and how we might go about rationalizing that?
Yeah, or you're welcome to attend one of the meetings too and get a feel for what we.
We have two liaisons. Do you guys come back a year and report?
Anytime there's something.
Right.
Say it in my.
Just for everybody up here, usually those are complaints submitted by citizens to the police department website. You know, they submit their traffic complaints and then we review them like, oh, everybody's saying that people go through this stop sign or everybody says that drivers are speeding down this road. So then we move, you know, we maybe put officers in certain areas or we move the radar truck somewhere to collect data. We look at what PD is actually seeing and what the fire district's actually seeing, what's reality versus just people thinking people are going fast. It's not necessarily problem, you know, and then it's like, well, I'm noticing people are parking on this curb, but that's not safe, so we should probably paint like no parking there, you know? Or it wore off, so we need to add it back, you know? It's not necessarily huge, big tasks.
Biggest thing that we do is encourage citizens to report anything they see.
Absolutely.
They're our eyes, in all honesty. I mean, our crews are out every day, but sometimes whether you get complacent to some or you just don't realize it's an issue because you're not living at that residence or whatever. We really do encourage people to give us that input via the website. And that is, like she said, what the committee works off of. That's, those are what we prioritize and we get back to those people and say, this is our findings. Whether this is how we're going to correct it, thank you, whatever the case may be. That's, that's the best way to get it on the record, to use that portal.
Like, for example, I'm even thinking your wife suggested to me at a park that where they live, people are speeding. And so we looked at the signage and where's the county line, where's the city line? Is there a sign there? And if not by so far from the county, then should we add another one? And then we can just do that and we did. So we can throw up, you know, feed signs or change things within reason, but.
I think one, a meeting with police or a fire chief, they really stress education and they, you know, do a lot with education on how to prevent fires and how to prevent that. We, police, can we come up with something that, you know, would really help prevent speeding or stopping signs? You know, marketing of the marketing tools, that we got kids in these locations, please slow down. Not adding obviously a lot of work. I mean, that's, education will, you know, kind of go a long way. So I'd like to maybe look at that at a later time.
Honest answer is always enforcement.
They know you'll be there and catch them.
Sometimes it's just a matter of, and lieutenant can tell you, just parking a car on the side of the road and leaving it there.
You know, I, during running for office, I did get those emails. They don't stop at my stop sign, they go right through it. It's a kid's zone. So I drove through there the next day and there was an officer parked there watching.
Yeah, it's enforcement. You could tell everybody not to speed all day long, but once there's nobody around to watch them, they're going to do it.
Good with three and on the four?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, so goal four is develop a diverse and accessible park system for people of all abilities within a 10-minute walk. 4.1 is update the parks and recreation master plan.
This is ongoing, this is going for a while.
Yes.
One thing I did notice is of the 60 written thoughts from third grade class was you talk about all abilities. I would like to see more about people with disabilities accessed. That up to later time. Learn about each park and what they have accessed.
That's good. Question about the budget. So under section nine, actual costs, it says the Parks Master Plan coming in at $27,558 and change. Path expects that project will cost around the budgeted $100,000. Is there something in addition to the?
No, and perhaps it's not indicated here directly, but at Parks Master Plan, $27,000 figure, that is the dollar spent on this project to date as of the writing of this report, which was, I believe it was early December.
December 5th, I believe, in or about.
Okay, but total project, the master plan completion is $100,000.
You just said that $27,000 is on budget at this time, what we expected.
Yes, we are within budget currently. And I would say generally speaking, for a master plan, this is a low amount, very low. All right, 4.2 peace candle, protect and restore and update the welcome sign.
Mr. Mayor, can we hear from Joel Isaac-Dave some?
Yeah, no, the WIC is nearing completion. The neon's all done, they're reassembling now in paint. Not 100% sure of the installation date, but I would anticipate everything will come together probably sometime in the spring. There's new signs being made for the portion. Electrical work still to do. We've got some water to finish connecting ours to it. That was a major hurdle, so I would just expect to see it complete sometime in the spring, early summer, to the latest.
Thank you.
I'd like to, and maybe it is, maybe, I don't know, but we are spending this and redoing this. I'd like to see, know more about it. I'd like to maybe have edestals outside talking about the history of Scapoo's or, you know, let's really market that.
It's actually in the works as well.
Yeah, do you have that in there?
Yeah.
Plans to think alike, hey, move on.
Okay, 4.3 develop the Grabhorn property conceptual plan.
This is currently on hold.
Correct.
Yes, so by request of the Parks Committee. And, you know, quite frankly, with the Parks Master Plan in play, that makes sense because you ultimately want this, you know, to be combined with the master plan. Anything in a master plan is going to have a much better shot at a grant. And it can be, you know, wrapped up into that process and also it can be part of the capital improvement plan. So to have some estimates on costs and things like that.
Be on schedule with the Parks Master Plan for August 2023, where we'll have definitive information at that time where we can start.
At this time, yes, the Parks Master Plan project is slated to be complete by mid to end of July, depending on availability for meeting schedule of the council as we get closer to that point. So in comparison to when the project initially started, it's about four weeks behind schedule.
Still are, we're still good on some grants for gravel property.
So, yes, so what I would say is that the grant we'd probably want to pursue is generally open and available in the spring of each year. So if this is wrapping up, say, even if, even if it wraps up in the fall, which, you know, master plans kind of notoriously do run off schedule, unfortunately. But even if that were to happen, we could still prepare the application and have it submitted by, I think they're typically due in April. You know, and we would find out probably by June, essentially, if we were to actually receive the grant. But we could be looking at doing that in spring of '24.
Is there anything we can do before that, such as trails? I mean, are we at a point at all that we like, okay, all the plans we said would say that? And there's a grant for that and we could do it this spring, this summer?
Um, I would, my personal opinion is that until the master plan is done, I think that's a harder sell. I think once you have the plan done, you have a vision that has a lot of community input. And, you know, you, and the other thing I think is going to be really important coming out of the master plan too is a prioritization. What do you want to see first in what order? Because we do have very limited park funds and grants are difficult. You know, I mean, we've been very successful with them, but they're not the easiest things to get either. So I think there really needs to be a discussion about prioritization and what you want to go for first. Because eventually too, if you keep going back to the same grant program, they're probably eventually going to stop awarding you funds. So I think there needs to be a, again, a prioritization and a strategy around how we want to tackle those projects, given our limited funding.
There's also limited funders that fund this kind of work in particular. So there's not very many places we can go.
Missing a cycle doesn't mean we're really missing out on grants.
No.
It's actually making us more competitive. These kind of funders look for things in plans. They look for.
They want master plans.
They want to see that things are.
Also, if you've been awarded for one of those programs recently, they may not be, you know, as interested in giving you money if someone else has a good project at the, on the table and they've received no money ever from that program. Point four, continue Friends of Scapoo's Parks.
Any reason to revisit that?
If I may, other than to question if it needs to continue to be a goal. Having been on the Parks Interret Committee for, I think, years, we certainly are aware of the existence of the Friends of Scapoo's Park. I don't think we have ever utilized it as an organization or a funding source or anything like that, so.
So Friends of Scapoo's Parks is essentially the Parks Committee. It was kind of formulated to be like a 501(c)(3) version of the Parks Committee to help fundraise and do things. And essentially during COVID, that kind of stopped, fell by the wayside. But the Parks Committee, their normal scope of work has been doing most of what that group did. That's a good question. Committee was going strong up until COVID hit. That ultimately was the end of status. And all, I mean, everything's in place, ready to go. It's just a matter of getting people with the initiative to fire that thing back up, all the bylaws, everything is, it's all still there and it's a great organization and just needs participants.
Although arguably, you know, the Parks Committee is doing everything they were doing. So.
So I guess maybe we just, my suggestion would be that we kind of look at either reprioritizing that or changing the goal around that potentially.
Friends of Scapoo's Parks that I was working with, those, the work parties every week and, and on the parks. It was the Parks Committee was more of an advisory committee. They were your worker bees, if you will. But that's, that was the engagement I was having because I was coordinating supplies and dumping and everything for them to do park projects. Really, the only people that have picked up slack, if you will, is Scapoo's Bay Watershed Council. They've been working very diligently to get volunteer work parties out in Veterans Park and things.
I'd like to maybe see those bylaws and what the job entails, what the committee entails and see if it's something that as we grow with our parks, it's something we can re. Go ahead.
All right, 4.5 support public art.
Anything right now you want to bring up? I mean, are we looking at anything right now? Or any?
We had a steel sculptor reach out to us this past month. Told them this time, at some point in January, we'll be reaching out to me with them just to see what they have to offer. Other than that, I have not heard of anything recently. It's really been something that that has been the Parks Committee that's been kind of spearheading art. Been a lot of different ideas presented, but nothing's come to fruition yet. It's really been something that that has been the Parks Committee that's been kind of spearheading art, there's been a lot of different ideas presented, but nothing's come to fruition yet.
I think we have a new member that does that specifically, nice to talk to him now and see if he can give some more ideas, he's done those and.
We're, we're poised and ready to partner with somebody who's willing to do it. The skate park was a huge success, so I think we have to keep that going and the glow about front here and.
Are they painting the candle at all, I mean, are they gonna be putting anything around other than the sign, Scappus, there's just red with the sign?
Just, just red with the signs is what council elected to do a year ago.
And based on survey results from the community. They really wanted to stick with a classic look, essentially just restore the current candle as is.
If there was a wall that high school seniors are painted every year and left up for a year till the next. See some of the paintings here on the mid-school. And the signs we have out here, I mean, if we are looking at to find more art and to incorporate the school a little bit.
Just my opinion, but the outside this wall right here would be a great canvas.
Yeah. All right, moving on.
Okay, so moving on to goal five, address aging infrastructure, we have five point one, city facility master plan.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
The question I have on that is where we potentially stand with the school district on any discussions to potentially fire the middle school, is that even addressed in their school district's long-term plan?
The school district is putting together a bond that'll go on an upcoming ballot. The bond has to pass in order for a new middle school to be built. If that does pass, that doesn't mean the school district will be handing over the middle school or willing to sell it. So there's a lot of what ifs in play, could we even afford it, would we want a building that old? Do we, you know, there's a lot of, sure, there's been a, you know, dialogue between us and them about the idea of they're not gonna be in it forever as a middle school, but then what will they use it for, and if nothing, is that something that we're able to take over? There's just so many what ifs, and who knows if that bond will pass or not, so I think there's nothing we can do at the moment in time.
So I have spoken with Tim Porter about it a little bit, he does know that there's some level of interest, it is also included in our urban renewal area, although bear in mind that public facilities like that are not a best practice for urban renewal dollars because it does not generate TIF, because that would not be a tax building, so it's not that you can't do it and put it into public facilities like that, but you do have to get some buy-in from overlapping taxing districts, and it's just generally not considered a best practice. That said, when I did chat with Tim Porter, you know, again, he is aware of our interest. It would be incredibly expensive to upgrade that building, unfortunately, I think it's a great building, and I love that idea because we could fit all of our facilities there, and we could even have some community space, but you know, that's part of the reason why they're looking at building a new middle school is because it's actually cheaper just to put up a new building than it is to try to fix that building. So I think it's a great idea, but I don't know ultimately, at the end of the day, how realistic it is because of the costs associated with it.
Think they would definitely like to keep it as their first goal, we would have to come to them with something to show that we can offer them something that. But I definitely wanna be in those conversations, you know, that. You know?
Five point two, wastewater phase one improvements.
Thing new, Dave?
Yeah, well, the design is still in progress, we're scheduled for completion design of phase one by spring of this year. Be going out to bid this summer and hopefully having some contractors on site by this coming fall. We will be going up to look at a dryer with DEQ, the one that was presented to you, DEQ hadn't put their eyes on yet, so we're gonna go tour it with them. It's gonna be a new item that they've never seen before, so it's state-of-the-art technology that they're excited for, so we may actually be a pilot project for the state of Oregon, if you will. So, yeah, everything's moving forward on it.
Have you, Kim or Andrew had a chance to go ahead and see all the sites yet?
Friday.
Went up, early, like, prewarms the truck up.
Afternoon, I did request afternoon.
That'll be a lot of fun. Any other questions?
All right, five point three, stormwater master plan.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Chris, could you just give a very overview overview of this? Just, just to kind of get people up to speed, it's a big one.
We've been working on this one for a while.
Yeah.
Although, I don't have all the history, but it's been several years. Right now, we're at the point of having some draft chapters to review, and we'll be looking at those over the next weeks. Fortunately, we got, we got that right before the holiday break, so we didn't really get a chance to jump into that, and our consultant team was on vacation anyway, so it'd been good for the feedback. So the dates that were given in here for the council meetings for the the work session and so on, they'll probably get, they're gonna be bumped out a little bit. And then they also finished up a financial review, we're actually, this is one of the few that we've incorporated the SDC and fee study within the master plan, which is gonna be great, except that we just got that, that data was just presented to the, the consultant team, and they're gonna review it first, and then they'll present it to us, we haven't seen that yet, that's another piece that we're gonna look at here in the next probably month or so. So we're, I think we're on track to wrap that up sometime, you know, spring, early summer. Does that help? Sure, questions?
I don't know. The greater good, thank you.
I just saw the word grant, do we have any grants right now that we're actively searching for, or anything in the works?
Stormwater grants, no, not at the moment. The completion of this master plan will help dictate our future and our financial needs via doing a rate analysis to see where we are, that's part of their scope. So they're likely gonna say that we're gonna need to be thinking about some rate increases to accommodate the level of service that DEQ requires. It will dictate our future for CIPs, what kind of projects we're gonna need to be funding in the future to be compliant. So this master plan is gonna take a lot of the future, and it'll be three or four opportunities where this will be in front of you over the next couple of months to have these discussions.
Move on.
Five point four is update wastewater and transportation SDCs and fees.
Have those fees, have we, have those fees already been taken care of, the asset plate?
Yeah, the wastewater has been reviewed, and our numbers right now are there with the new numbers, so we just haven't had time to bring it before you for updates on that, because it's, if it was a large amount of money, we'd be talking about, it'd be different, but it's, it's nominal. So as far as transportation goes, we're, once again, not in a position of necessity, rates are pretty relevant to where we are. There is, Chris and Lori can touch on this briefly, but there is possibly a industrial zone for SDC rate changes and patterns to help initial businesses get started down there. So again, that's preliminary talk, so we just haven't.
Five point five, collections master plan implementation.
I see all the signs up Smith Road, are they starting to work up there now?
No, Smith Road Pump Station is definitely on our horizon for the collection system, it's our next large capital project. We have $900,000 coming in state revenue for that, we're just trying to find the most economical way to build it, we looked at having a design done, cost was pretty high, and so we're evaluating different methods to save some money on that, whether a design build is more feasible. As far as the collection system and pipe work, we're right now just doing spot repairs, all of our eggs honestly are in the wastewater treatment plant's basket, until we know what that is gonna look like financially, we're not prepared to commit to pipe work. Our efforts on pipe work have been in the distribution for water system right now.
What work is being done up Bella Vista than just water work?
Bella Vista is, is a pipeline replacement on a portion that has some steel pipe that is the end of its life or nearing it, and with the upcoming paving project, we don't wanna be digging that up after the fact, so we're replacing it to be proactive, ahead of the curve on it.
None of the wastewater, any storm, anything else under there is good?
I've reviewed all of the TV of everything under there and everything that way can be done via manhole, there's a couple spot repairs that we'll do some robotic repairs on, but the pipe work itself is fine.
Five point six, delivery of water and wastewater infrastructure projects.
December 2nd, that happened, posted the RFP. Explain to me a little bit about the Basalt Well, exactly what that would do, is this the new one they're talking, you're talking about?
We have two wells on the horizon, one is at the Dutch Canyon side, and it's what we call in the alluvials, it's at about 200-foot depth, and the Basalt Well is proposed at a 600-foot depth, it's a depth that we've never into, and we've had to work the last two years pretty diligently with the Water Resource Department to get an approval to do this. Data is very limited as to what's down there, and they had some reserves of whether they wanted us to try that, but some persuasion, they gave us the nod to move forward with this. So it will be experimental, but the water quality is far superior, typically speaking, from the salt wells. Warren water is almost exclusively out of that, and they don't have to treat because the water quality is so high. So we're very optimistic about what that'll bring, and it'll be located somewhere, we have two proposed locations, one may be on the Miller location, or it may be out where the new CZ well is, we haven't quite determined the best for that yet, but it'll be at one of those two locations. The well design for the Dutch Canyon is beaten, it'll be going out to bid probably within the next month for a well driller. We're still in final review, we haven't got the final order back from the Water Resources for the Basalt, so it's not a done deal yet. Till it is, we don't wanna start committing to design till we know for sure.
I think the public comment period on that closes in a couple days, actually.
End of March is when we should hear it.
Yeah.
We're gonna do it, guys.
Yeah, we actually did it.
What to compare it to, so. Anything else? This is our next steps on this, obviously, we get our retreat, we will be going over it a little more and determine any new goals, changes. The other, we get on to, let's, let's do my calendar. We go. Okay, city offices will be closed December, or January 16th. Council work session 6:00 PM, Tuesday, January 17th, and followed by a council meeting at 7:00 PM. Economic Development Committee noon on Thursday, January 19th, all at 6:00 PM with the Parks and Rec. It's like Planning Commission meeting on January 26th, Thursday at 7:00 PM. And our 50-year committee meeting at 6:00 PM on Tuesday, January 31st. Think I'm missing on there? Hey, any updates?
Mayor and council, I just wanted to say congratulations and welcome again to the new members of council, and just thank staff for being here this evening to discuss goals, and that's all I've got, thank you.
Just the same, congratulations, anything I would have told you right now, I already told you, reviewing the goals.
Counselors?
Yeah, so I just, I wanna thank staff for the help kind of getting geared up, answering all the questions, being really responsive. It's an exciting opportunity to serve the community in this capacity, but also certainly a somewhat intimidating one, but I am looking forward to getting it, getting through it with all of my fellow counselors' support and the staff, so thank you.
Welcome new council members, excited to have you onboard, I got to meet the new lieutenant, I don't wanna botch your last name there, so I'll avoid saying that, trying to say it. Welcome, it's good to have you onboard. 911 has their next meeting on the 11th, and it was originally said at the December 1st presentations that it was going to be at the end of January, or sometime during the end of January, however, it's gonna be on the 11th. It's kind of unclear what exactly they're doing, it sounds like there may or may not be an attempt to vote on a specific system. I did send out a comparison sheet that I worked on with some professionals to basically do a side-by-side comparison between the presentations that were presented on the end of, that we did at the end of November, and then also Motorola Tate presented again on December 1st. That was sent out to all of council on December 9th. So if you didn't get that, please let me know, but it very clearly shows the difference in columns between what we're looking at. And basically, the summary is, is that Tate's coverage that they proposed with 14 sites gave the county, the public safety responders extremely good coverage, and there was no concerns that I heard whatsoever from anybody that saw that, none of the public safety chiefs, the sheriff was very impressed with it, obviously, he has a challenge working in rural Columbia County. There's one thing that continues to bother me very much, and that is the lack of desire from the 911 district, specifically the director to involve the schools in this project for school safety. I will not support any funding request for any system that does not enhance school safety, specifically what I mean by that is there needs to be a school emergency talk group on the radio system, and there needs to be radios in schools, the front office, principal, whatever, that can hit the emergency button, and it instantly goes to 911, doesn't rely on landline telephones, doesn't rely on cellular communications. It is essentially a panic alarm that is free of failure. And that is one thing that if they continue not to include that in their overall plans, that I'll bring back to council, but they will not have my support unless they include schools because of the school safety aspect. So all of that to say, please come on the 11th, yeah, and I wanna thank Councilman Q too, because you were present at the presentations, and you specifically brought up the school aspect too. So I think that's just extremely important, and it just seems like a no-brainer, and also allows the 911 district to qualify for school safety grants as well, so it just baffles me that that would not be included, assuming that it won't be. But so far, all the comments and all the activity that I've seen so far don't include schools. Thank you.
Thank you, just for the record, can you please say your name? Llewellyn, easy peasy lemon squeezy, okay, welcome, Lieutenant Llewellyn. We're on a really odd schedule than the rest of the state, but our kids go back to school tomorrow, so just be careful on the highway again, it's been a few weeks. Kids will be out there on the side streets, I know, weird, right? I know. Anyways, and just watch your vehicles and be safe. I wanna give a huge appreciation to the new mayor, he reached out to counselors, I know I personally had a meeting with him. I'm very excited at his willingness to learn, but also to do. And congratulations to Councilor La Friends and Councilor Holmes for being here. I actually had a memory on Facebook pop up today on the first time I was sworn in, so it's an exciting and nerve-wracking time, and I remember my first meeting being quite a packed house with a topic that was a little bit heated, so welcome to the game. Appreciate you being here.
Just welcome our new counselors and the job mayor, our meeting today, and I'd just like to say, well, it's not done yet, you're getting there though, you took enough chance to mess up, I know. No, you've done a great job. It was interesting, though, regarding the schools, the 911 committee that. It was interesting though regarding the schools, uh, the nine one one committee that, and the board that we, we met with, that I asked about that and they said, the director or the person giving the presentation, not for Tate, but for the other group, said, well, we really weren't asked to do that. So, which was kind of interesting that that wasn't part of the criteria that they were going to report on. And here we are, you know, we've got Ualde and other terrible things that happened in schools and, uh, but it wasn't on their radar screen, so. But I have to say Tate did include it in there. Ask to do it or not. Anyway, that's it.
Yeah, thanks. Uh, like Kim said, I'd like to thank the city staff, all of them. Questions that I know you. Anytime, every two years I know you. Letting us be welcomed. Honored to serve the.
All right, my time. I'll keep it brief, I'll have a lot of time to talk after this, but I, I wanted to thank, um, first my mother and my favorite child for making it all the way through the meeting.
Yeah, that is.
Like record, yep.
Appreciate it. It's been a humbling last two or three months. I really appreciate all the help and support I've been given and all the education I've, I've learned as well. It's, it, truthfully, it's, it has kind of always been a dream of mine to be in this kind of situation where I can help a lot, try to help a lot of people, uh, the most. And, and I think at this time, this could be it, so I really appreciate that. I do really look forward to working with the staff. It's, it's going to be a lot of fun. I did want to give a shout out to our high school girls' basketball team. We did just come back from Las Vegas last week where we did win a basketball tournament and won a trophy. Went four and one and our varsity girls did really well, so I wanted to make a good job to them. And, um, I did want to thank, uh, Mayor Burge, uh, Councilor Lesowski and Councilor Pauling for their dedication, people of Scappus. I truly believe, uh, we're a better city because it's. Got, it's here a little, almost half my life, given this, so I think I really, I really do appreciate that. That's all I have for tonight. Appreciate it, meeting adjourned.